Welcome to the Monday, November 20th, Meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
So we have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any discussion of the minutes, changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda?
Mr. Perrow?
If you could just state your name and city or town of residence.
Bob Perrow, Rutland City.
Welcome.
So I was here at the last meeting that we had, and it was pretty emotional. The takeaway from that meeting that I kind of want to drive home is that despite the crassness and despite how upset people were, what we need to realize is that this is the level that it's come to. Wednesday night, I've experienced something on my own. I was out at a meeting out in Mendon, and my wife and my 16-year-old daughter came home, and there was somebody that was drugged out, standing in the front of our driveway, and no matter what they did, they couldn't get the person to move. And my wife had called me, of course, I'm 15 minutes away, I can't get home in time. Told her she should call the police, and she was about to do that, and the person actually moved away on their own. But I wasn't going to have my 16-year-old daughter and my wife get out and do that. Going forward, a couple of things that I've thought about, we need to all be on the same page. I don't care what side of the aisle you're on, I don't care where you're going, everybody wants this city to thrive. And to be absolutely honest with you, for any of us to think that we want anybody on this board to fail, or the mayor to fail, or anything like that, that's the last thing that we want, because that's like, hey, I don't like the pilot, I want the plane to go down because the pilot sucks. I mean, that's just not what we're talking about here, okay? Everybody wants to see this city thrive. One of the things that I learned years ago, some of you that are older will remember this, Ponies Bar that used to be in the area. I bar attended, and I was a doorman there for a long time, and everybody thought that doormen bouncers are just these mean people, whatever. No. What I had learned from that job was, if you make people feel safe and you make them feel protected, you don't have to entice them to come in. They'll come in on their own. I used to walk women out to their cars every single night because they were afraid. One woman was getting stalked, asked me if I'd walk her out to a car. I used to do it every time she'd come there, and she would always come there, she'd always spend her money there. I'm a business owner, wanting to bring businesses into the area, which we have to do. Half these plans that are coming up, and half these budgets that are coming up, I mean, I saw the fire department, I don't know what the fundraiser's for, but I saw it earlier today, the fire department shouldn't be doing a fundraiser, especially not a paid fire department. Okay? The city needs money, we need money for the police department, we need money for a lot of things, and we're trying to beg, borrow, and steal and figure out where those are coming from, but where they need to come from is they need to come from some form of a business base. But what business is going to want to come here if they know someone can walk right through their door, take what's on their shelf, walk out the door, and nothing's going to happen to them? I get it, it's nobody's fault here. I get it's the legislation that needs to change. And I also get that the police department's doing the best they can. We have a couple groups that are out there right now. One of them changed their name, I think it's Stand Your Ground Vermont, and the other one, I think, is City Patrol. Chris Geo, I think, is one of them, and I think it's Don Davis in the other one. And there's been talk about this being like a vigilante-style group and everything like that. Well, I can tell you from experience and from reading all of this stuff, I mean, I watch it, I read it, I comment on it, and I found out that that's the furthest thing that these people want. So my thought is, is that I'm tending to think, not knowing a lot about it, Project Vision would probably be in line with what these people are doing. Here's the problem with Project Vision. When asked about that, people know nothing about it. I've had people actually tell me, I've never even heard of it. You know how high I had heard of it? Is because of Mark Stockton. I knew Mark Stockton, and that's the only way that I'd heard about it. And then I heard that Commander Prowdy had actually headed it up for a little while. The reason I bring this up is, when you advertise in a business and you buy ads, they'll give you a sweet deal. Your hat will run at 3:00 in the morning, but you'll get a sweet deal on it. Are you really promoting a business by doing that? So if you're promoting Project Vision, why are the meetings on a Wednesday at 1:00? First off, even if that was a lunch break, that would be after somebody's lunch break. Secondarily, who's going to give up the lunch break to come down there? I mean, if we can find money, we can find people to staff this, this needs to get out there. And if you really, really, really want this to work, and you want it to happen, and Project Vision is something that you're all behind and that you want to make work, contact these other groups. See how they feel about it, see if they'd be willing to join in. Make it so that people that actually have a job can show up and find out what it's all about, and then they can make a decision. Because I'm going to tell you right now, if you were to poll people on the street, most of them don't even know it exists, and those that know it exist have no idea what it does. And so far, the only experience that I've had with it was not a good one. And it was hearsay, so I'm not even going to bring the situation up right now. I don't want to do that. But again, like I said, I'm not up here, I don't want anybody to fail. I really don't. I mean, I don't care where you are, what you're from, or what you're doing. I want this to work, but this isn't going to work. You're simply not going to bring people into this area, or businesses into this area, if this crime just keeps going. I was fortunate enough to talk to a state trooper for about an hour and a half the other night, they get together, I was at. One of the things that I didn't realize, on their phones, they have the complete rulebook in Vermont for citations, anything that they can do, anything you want to look up, and he showed it to me. One of the things that he'd actually said to me is, he said, you know, this whole thing about people trespassing and people's car being not illegal, can the city pass an ordinance? Saying that in the city it is an ordinance, that it is illegal, at least in the city. I'm not up here to complain, I'm up here to try to find solutions, you know? That's why I'm saying, try this. I mean, I talked to this guy for an hour and a half, yeah, he was a great guy, I enjoyed his company, but really, I was picking his brain, trying to figure out, what would you do in law enforcement, where would you go with this? And one of the things that he had said is, he said, petition them to, you know, talk about doing something like that. And one final note, and I'm not trying to name names or anything else, but one thing that got me a little bit disheartened was, one of the articles that I read, Cheryl Hooker had said that she was, and I'm paraphrasing because I can't remember the exact words, but disappointed that the people couldn't see what you guys were actually doing, and that you guys were doing something. Show us. Beat it like a dead horse. I mean, bottom line is, is that everyone uses social media, everybody in here uses social media, and they use it to promote themselves. If you're going to promote yourselves, promote your agenda. Promote what your agenda is, let people know what it is. Ask people to help you. I guarantee you right now that anybody in this city would stand up right now if they knew it was going to help, and they knew that they would do it. And don't double-speak. We all know what double-speak is. I mean, basically, just don't do it. I mean, just be straight up with us, be honest with us, and if somebody's got questions, they'll ask them. But right now, the only way you're going to get people to come together is if you're straight with them, you're honest with them, and you tell them what your plan is. Because if you don't tell them what your plan is, they're just going to assume you're doing it behind closed doors because you don't want them to know. And it's been my experience that anything done behind closed doors has never benefited somebody on the outside. So, thank you for your time, I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving. Hopefully, we can do something about this.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Mr. Heck.
Hi, my name's Henry Heck, Rutland City resident. I'm hopeful that the board received an email from me yesterday in regards, sent it off to the mayor, sent it off to Attorney LaChance. In regards, it's a pretty basic, simple question. In regards to a charter change, you need to check some boxes. At the prior meeting, may have, wasn't looking to get into a debate with the board in regards to the dynamics of this, but this is the big surprise. Basically, I'm looking for a charter change that would allow the voters just to vote on another elected official. Instead of appointed, they could vote on an elected official. So in odd years, they get to vote on a mayor, treasurer, an assessor, six members at large for an alderman, and I'm requesting that they're able to vote on their city clerk as well. Nothing deep secret about this, it's just got to do with the fact, as the city clerk for 14 and a half years, upon my non-reappointment, which the mayor had every single right to do, I was contacted by a lot of people. They were very unhappy about that decision. I felt that I always did my best in regards to my job, always ran my office effectively as a neutral entity, didn't matter to us, you know, RPDs, gays, non-gays, black, white, you know? That's how I basically ran the office. So I stated to people that, you know, you have that ability. This just happens to be petition season. There's no sense in talking about these things in March, April, May, June, or July. As the next election comes around, it'll be in March. So this is a very simple request. The first order of how it works in regards to a charter change, the mayor has every right to come to the board and ask for something to be put on the ballot. These type of requests, if you go back 2008, 2011, appointed versus elected, elected versus appointed, term lengths, designations of districts, how are they going to, you know, formulate and do those things? So these things have all been placed on the ballot before. This is, this is not like, you know, a clear, out-of-the-blue type of request. And quite honest, I'm just kind of checking the boxes. As the clerk, I know basically how the requirements come, what needs to be done. The first request would go to the mayor. If the mayor is willing to put that on the ballot, allow the voters just to determine if they would like to vote for a city clerk. Doesn't mean it's going to happen, the voters have to approve it. So nothing gets done until it goes on the ballot, and then the voters have to approve it. Questions like this have been put on the ballot, some of them pass, some of them don't pass. So again, it's just up to the voters to decide that. If the mayor decides he does not want to place that on the ballot, then I would come, or I am here to ask the board of Aldermen, which would take two-thirds of the majority present here, to basically supersede the mayor's request and have it placed on the ballot, and let the voters go ahead and vote for that. After that, there's, you know, there's a petition of 5% of the voters in the city of Rutland, if they sign a petition, that can go on there. So I don't think it would be fair just to start a petition and not come to you folks first, and the mayor, to ask that question. So I'm here to ask the question and see if anybody, the mayor of the board, would like to take that up this evening. Thank you.
Want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Heck, for coming in with your request. So, real quick, I personally, and as the mayor of the city, you know, looking at the trends in Vermont and kind of where things are going, if you look at where our city sits, you know, right now, we're fifth in population, hoping to get back to, you know, second or third someday. But even in that list of the top seven cities, the clerk position is actually appointed or hired in all of those top cities. And the state, back in 2017, actually, in Act 24, made it easier to move to appointed positions over elected positions because of sometimes the availability, sometimes, you know, the requirements for those positions. So from a mayoral standpoint, I would actually pass the request to the board to say, is this something that the board wants to discuss? If so, maybe refer to committee through that process. At this time, I'll say I'll pass that responsibility to the board. Thank you.
Good.
Let me just follow up, I as well did some research. 256 communities have clerks within those, the larger municipalities of the nine cities that are out there. I'm not quite sure the top seven are all appointed as far as that goes. Some of recent have changed from an elected to appointed because they've had officials that have been there 25, 30, 35 years, and they weren't quite sure, no one was willing to run, so they were basically looking at appointing because you have to have a clerk as far as that goes. I think it's over 92, 93% of those 256 communities out there have an elected clerk. Not only are they elected clerks, but the majority of them are clerks and treasurers as well, as far as that goes. So I don't discount what the mayor is saying as far as it is, but the data's there. I would ask you to kind of take a look for yourselves, just to see, you know, what I'm stating. I'm not coming here without having some insight in regards to that information as well.
Very good. What is the pleasure of the board? Alderwoman Davis?
I don't know if it's the pleasure of the board, but in order for the board to weigh in, I'll refer to charter and ordinance.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this to charter and ordinance. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Alderman McCann?
So I know that this board can choose to entertain, it comes to, an idea like this that comes to it, but I don't think we're required to entertain everything. For this particular issue, I worry that the optics could be for the city, that for Mr. Heck, who has been personally impacted by this thing, and who knows the system, he may be looking to, you know, adjust the rules for his own possible benefit, and that may not be what actually comes out of this. But we haven't heard, or I haven't heard, any concerns about the mechanism that we use to identify a clerk for the city, either personally, you know, or in terms of, you know, individual people, or the benefit that we're getting out of that position. We've got a lot of stuff that we need to work on, there's a lot of things already in charter and ordinance, and I'm not sure that this mayor is kind of putting that on the list, given, you know, what benefit it may or may not give the city relative to all the other important things we have going on.
Any other members of the board wish to speak to this referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Was that a no?
No.
Motion passes. Very good. So there'll be a charter and ordinance meeting. Alderwoman Savage is chair of charter and ordinance, so I imagine she'll reach out.
And as an old friend of mine, I used to say, time is of the essence, as far as that goes. So I understand that it is the middle of budget season, as far as that goes, and, you know, the attempt here, you know, would have been shocked if either/or had decided to place it on the ballot. So Attorney LaChance, I'm going to forward you a petition that I've looked at in regards to just the wording on it. The Secretary of State has acknowledged that is a binding document as far as that goes. I just want you to have a glance at it as well. But I think that at this point in time, I do appreciate your allowing me to speak, but if there's any interest out there, I think we'll just start this petition process because it's one of those things that, once you get into it, you know, taking the amount of time that it may take, need to find out how many registered voters are left. There was 11866 when I was here, you know, a couple months ago. It could be more, it could be less, but I'm figuring around 600 signatures is what it would take to get this placed on the ballot. And also, there are certain criteria that fall in regards to specific dates, but at this point in time, you know, by January 1st, first week in January, if that petition is presented and stuff, it would allow the city to follow through with the statutes in regards to required meetings that would need to be facilitated before the election to happen and to occur, as far as that goes. But I do appreciate your time, thank you very much, and have a very nice holiday.
Very good. Alderwoman Savage?
Yeah, that was my concern, there's such a robust agenda of things in charter and ordinance already that Mr. Heck could start a petition and go that route as well at the same time. And there's nothing stopping him from doing that, correct?
That is correct. And sending along that language, we would appreciate it, it'll, I think, help the committee make their decision as well. So, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on our agenda? Step right to the podium and state your name and city or town of residence. It's a narrow passage, I know.
Hi, I'm Alexis Moore, I live at 38 Pine Street here in Rutland. I'm an insulin-dependent diabetic, and I'm disabled, and I have arterial disease. I live on a fixed income. The high point of my day is feeding pigeons that are hungry and starving the winter. And thus, you know, it allows me to take walks because I need to maintain, you know, a certain body weight because of my multiple chronic health issues. I called the wildlife warden today, and I asked for his opinion and if he could send me the code sections. And what he's saying is that anybody can feed pigeons after December 1st, and then prior to that, as long as it doesn't attract bears. I mean, has anybody seen bears in Rutland? Recent?
Yes, they have.
Out there, where I feed them?
They've been on Grove Street, Crescent Street.
Coming out of Pine Hill Park. And that's, I'm not harming anything, and I'm just appealing to compassion here. It's something I do that helps me help the community, I feel very useful, and I'm sure that that would lead to more usefulness. And I was approached by a lady policeman today, I'm not blaming anybody, I don't want any antagonism, and I don't want to put anybody against anybody. I just would like compassionate understanding, that she said she was going to ticket me, I guess, give me a trespass, eventually take me to jail. I am just hoping, please let me feed my birds and the squirrel, and I'm sure there's no mess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. So I shouldn't fear because I have a broken law, I'm a good citizen, and I have high hopes for being here, you know, to be more useful, and I can, thank you, sir.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Okay, good evening. First off, tonight with us here, we have Sean Sargent. Sean has been the, on the Police Commission for a total of over 10 years, and for the past seven years, he has served as chair. At the last Police Commission meeting, at the end of the meeting, he resigned his post, and I thought he could maybe say a few words and give you the opportunity to talk to Sean. So, Sean?
So thank you, the mayor just invited me tonight to say a few words. So, just in case anybody doesn't know, my wife and I have sold our business, and we're purchasing a home in Clemson. In fact, my wife's in Clemson right now, going through the final paperwork before the closing. We have a fantastic practitioner coming into the area to take over Sergeant Appraisal. I'm really excited we were able to bring someone here. He grew up in Killington, went to school at Cornell, and you're going to continue to see Sergeant Appraisal Service serve this community from right here in Rutland, and I'm happy about that. So in terms of my tenure as a member of the Police Commission, I want to say thank you to Chief Collin, and thank you to the men and women of the Rutland City Police Department. During my tenure, they made it so easy to support them, almost without exception, through their behavior and following our policies and procedures. And Rutland is very well-served and receives fair and impartial policing from one of the best police forces in the state of Vermont, and I'm personally proud of that. I did want to tell the board and the people of the city of Rutland that my tenure on the commission is bookmarked by just two horrific events that still affect me. Excuse me. Carly's death, I think about it often, I just want to remind people that Carly's mother told us the best way to remember her was to always be kinder than necessary, the way that Carly lived. And frankly, I really struggled with Jessica's death, and I just wanted to share with you some words that I received from Pastor Tim, who's one of the chaplains in the department. And Pastor Tim told me, it's okay to not be okay. And then he said, I'm paraphrasing, it's also okay to never be the same again. And that's, I kind of hold on to that some days. Anyhow. So I want to thank the Dungus Administration and the Lehrer Administration, and also the Loris Administration for allowing me to serve the people of the city of Rutland in this way. And I'll be around part-time through July, and very little of the time after July. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. And although, you know, your, my administration was for only eight months, it was a good eight months, there'd been a lot going on, and your leadership was impressive, to say the least, during that time. So I really appreciate the support that you've given to the city and to our police department. So thank you very much for your tenure. With that, on your desk are two nominations. One for Police Commission Chair, Pat Bromin. Pat is, and let me pull it up, I want to make sure I get the title right. There's also, thank you, that's faster. So Pat is currently an assistant professor and the Criminal Justice Program Coordinator for Castleton University. Her resume is on your desk as well, there you are. And then the second position is for our Fire Chief, Bill Lovett. It is time for his reappointment to his position. In the next week or so, you'll see a draft of his contract to come out for us to discuss in executive session at the next Board of Alderman meeting, but these are the two appointments, and as is customary, I'd ask you to table them to the next meeting.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to table these two nominations, it's been seconded. Alderman Gillan?
So the question is for the Fire Chief, it's a five-year contract?
Yeah, it'll be slightly shorter due to his retiring out, aging out at some point.
So it'll be a three-year contract?
A little more than that. We'll get him for as long as we can, how's that? Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Any further discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Also, you'll see on the agenda, an executive session to discuss an MOU with the police union. I ask that that be moved to the end of the meeting, as is customary as well. I just want to say thanks to Cedar for putting on a great annual meeting. For those of you who attended, it was interesting to see the space that the Mint has expanded into. I personally am on the board of the Mint, and so I'll just say thank you to them for hosting. The Mint is a great economic driver in our town, in our city, in our region as a whole. And it was great to be there in that space, along with many organizations and businesses that all support what we're doing here in our city of Rutland. And I think it was a great time, and I want to say thank you for that, to Cedar for putting that on. One other point to make, just for the public, I know all the board knows, here knows this, but our budget meetings have started. Over the next few weeks, we'll continue to have committee meetings where we discuss the items that are on the budget, and hear from department heads as to why they propose what they propose and what we've worked on together. So I encourage all of the Board of Aldermen and as many of the public as would like to come to attend those committee meetings, to hear what's going on and ask questions as we move forward through that process. On November 29th, which is not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, we're going to have another Public Safety meeting. This one's a Public Safety Community meeting, it'll be held at the Rutland Rec Center at 6:00 PM. This is the opportunity for the public to come, ask questions, have a discussion, right? So the meeting we had, the Town Hall style meeting, was very informational, level set. This is more of a conversation, question-and-answer type session. So the board is absolutely welcome to attend, I'll send an actual invite out to everybody with details, but it is for the public to mostly ask questions, for us here at the city to understand what's going on. We may not have all the answers that night, I mentioned this last time at the last Board of Alderman meeting, we may not have all the answers that night, but to hear the public's concerns is really the purpose of that meeting, so we'll be doing that.
What time?
It's at 6:00 PM on November 29th, at the Rutland Recreation Community Center. As far as questions go, I did mention that we had almost over 100 questions for the Town Hall submitted. All of those questions in their original form and the answers should be posted on the city website here in the next few days. We're just doing some proofreading to make sure that the answers are, you know, spelled correctly, and we have the proper punctuation, but most of those answers have been written, and we'll be posting those on the city website, so that everyone who did ask a question, who didn't get to hear the answer, or if it didn't get answered at that Town Hall meeting, will have the opportunity to read that. I do hope to get that up before Thanksgiving, just to make sure that people have the opportunity to read through those before they come to the next meeting. And then lastly, on December 6th, I'm going to be starting a Wednesday morning coffee with the mayor session. So every Wednesday morning, for the most part, from 8:30 to 10:00 AM, I'll be visiting different coffee shops in Rutland, and people can come and sit down and have conversations. It's kind of like an open op, hold on, one second, one second, sorry. It's kind of like an open office hours, where you'll be able to come meet, ask questions, and just have general conversation. The topics can change and range based on who's there, but that's the purpose of those meetings, so I just wanted to put that out there. Sorry, do you have?
Open to the public?
Open to the public.
Open to the public.
Nope, totally good question. Okay. Any questions? All right, that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, we have the mayor's request to move the executive session to the end. We have a request from Commissioner Protavansky regarding septic and sludge receiving rates that we'd like to add, and Attorney LaChance, did you want to move?
Yes, actually, the last item on my agenda, which was the PFAS settlement agreement discussion- discussion, I would like to move into executive session following the mayor's executive session.
So we'll move those two executive sessions to the end and we'll, and adding septic, sludge receiving rates. Can I get a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First, we have Ed Boe from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request regarding the Rutland Station Pedestrian Improvement Project grant. There's a memo on page one of your packet. Welcome.
Am I invited to those?
They're opening the door.
Okay, good, I'm there.
He might ask you to pay.
All right, maybe I won't be going. Hi, everyone. Before I start tonight, I just want to thank everyone on the board for taking the time to meet with me, welcome me. Many of you I've met with more than once and it's just been so informative, hearing your thoughts on the town and everything and where we go from here, giving me advice. And I think the first couple of months have been good. We're transitioning into some really exciting projects, a lot on the housing front we're doing. The TIF is going. The grant stuff that we usually do is also moving along, so it's been great. So thank you for that. I think there's lots of opportunity and definite, some, definitely some public-private opportunities that we can do to get things moving. Like I've been saying, I just want to see cranes in the downtown and cranes for construction projects. So hopefully we can get that going. So tonight, very simply, I just would like to refer to a committee. We have a VTранs Transportation Alternatives Grant and that is for the area near the Amtrak station. It's a design-build project that the city received money for. And getting into that now, we're, we're facing some challenges with scope, the cost, and the timeline, pretty much down the line. So I'm looking for a committee to refer this to, to talk about the potential options we have to move forward. I think there are some good options and some things we can do to actually make it better than it might have been like it is now. So that is encouraging.
Alderwoman Tadio and then Alderwoman Davis?
I will refer this to Community and Economic Development for a second.
We have a motion to refer this to CED and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, thank you. And the only one final thing I want to say, because I was doing some math in the last couple of meetings, is yesterday, the city returned 131 years old, which is the exact same amount of town that we were a town. So moving forward, we can say that we've been a city longer than we've been a town. So you know, it all comes together, but we are moving forward. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Commissioner Protavansky with a request related to ARPA funds allocated to DPW purchases. There's a memo on page two of your packet. Welcome.
Hi. So in October of 2022, DPW was allocated or approved from this board for $625,000 of ARPA money for a street sweeper and a loader. Both those were purchased under budget and there's roughly 128,500 left and we'd like to use that for a purchase of a backhoe or put towards a purchase of a backhoe.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to authorize DPW to use the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of $128,500 originally allocated to DPW in October 2022 to purchase a backhoe that would otherwise be requested in the upcoming budget.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the purchase and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
So after some of the discussion and concerns that were raised at the last meeting regarding how some surplus funds were used, I just want to make sure that for folks at home to know that this color of money is not transferable back to tax relief, to the, to the taxpayers of the city, right? The ARPA funds are pretty specifically directed at how they get used and so there's not a lot of flexibility in where we could put this back. So this would be a good use of that.
Any additional debate or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's got a second thing.
What? Oh, you have, do you want to do the septic rates now?
Yeah, my fault.
I won't make you wait all the way till the end.
With increased cost of disposal of sludge at the wastewater treatment plant, I'd like to refer the topic of septic and sludge receiving fees to committee, to Public Works.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to refer discussion of the receiving rates for sewer and septic. Did I say that right? To Public Works and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Alderwoman Davis?
It's just been so long. So when, when you, Bill does have the committee meeting that we revisit the number of towns that we were taking it from and what those charges are, right, and the private contractors.
Correct.
We just have a list.
Yeah.
Been a long time since we've looked at this.
Yeah, we have a nice spreadsheet showing the increases the cities incurred and
Great.
What an increase in fee rates.
And what was being charged.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner. Next up is Chief Kukuln with a request for a transfer of donated sick time for a police department employee. Welcome.
Thank you. So yes, this request is for the, your approval of the transfer of donated leave time for one of our employees who will be going through a FMLA qualifying event sometime in December. The leave will be for 12 weeks. And again, looking for the donation of leave time to substitute the unpaid FMLA time for paid leave time. And it will be in accordance with the city's donation, leave donation policy, which will include both sick, comp, and annual leave.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the Chief Kukuln's request for the employee's sick leave donation.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the sick time donation and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Next is City Clerk Kapusta with a request to move 2024 Board of Alderman meetings that fall on a Monday holiday. There's a memo on page three of your packet.
So in accordance with the city holiday schedule for 2024, I'd like to request moving Board of Alderman meetings that fall on a Monday holiday be moved to the following Tuesday. There are four dates in the year of 2024. So January 1 would move to Tuesday, January 2nd, January 15th would move to Tuesday, January 16th, Monday, February 19th would move to February 20th on Tuesday, and the last one is September 2nd will move to Tuesday, September 3rd.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move for the approval from the city clerk's schedule of meetings in 2024.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to move these four Board of Alderman meetings in 2024. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Next, we have Treasurer Markowski with the treasurer's report as of October 31st, 2023. This was emailed to board members. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. October, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, so I sent a lengthy report and when you're looking at it, you figure we're four months into the fiscal year. So if we were on an average every month, same spending, we would be having, we would be looking for a rate of about 33%. When I look at expenditures in the general fund, we're about 34%, a little bit above what the target is, but knowing that we have a lot of quarterly expenses and stuff. So I think, I looked over the, the list of departments to, which departments are over a little bit by that. Government buildings is one department at 40%. Remember, we approved that gov pilot purchase. That's causing that government buildings to be over budget. Recreation, I'm looking at it in total at 44%, but understanding that a lot of those expenses are seasonal with the pool and stuff. So, but anyway, one to watch. So transfers out, you'll see are over, but mostly due to board-approved transfers at the end of the year. So just highlighting some of those that are over that target. And then I, I would look at, to revenue as well in the same way, noting that actually interest earnings is up because I didn't really do a great job budgeting that. I didn't know what to expect. So I hate to forecast and not meet that because we need that for the tax rate. So we'll have some good earnings in, for that. Also, when you look at the pilot, we've received almost 100% of the pilot so far this year. And revenue in the rec at 54%, about 55% right now. So, so revenue looks good. I just wanted to put into context when Commissioner Protavansky was here speaking of sludge removal and so I just kind of looked in October, right now we have 128,000 in revenue, but we've spent 214,000. So there is a need to look at that and I know we've seen that before. I'm not sure if the revenue, if there's some others that haven't been collected, but the revenue doesn't meet, doesn't match that. So just thought I would throw that out there. And what I wanted to highlight tonight was that one change that I've had, I generally go through the cash accounts, what's there. And I did want to point out that in late October, we met with, we bank with a community bank on Woodstock Avenue. The bankers there, we met looking at our accounts and looking for opportunities for more, better interest rate. So I would like to report that we restructured a few city accounts. I always, you know, this is other people's money. This is so important that we protect that money. So investing those funds, you have to be cautious about that. But the bank had recommended a few different alternative repurchase accounts that invest in government securities. So we moved some funds over there to go from a 2.5% to a 4.25 for those. So I did want to report that out. So that was good news. Wanted to report on the transit fund because the numbers that you have in your packet do not reflect October month end, but I did roll it forward September. At September, we're showing a deficit of 7,000 expenses over, over revenues. So any questions on the financials for October?
Alderman McCann?
For the gov pilot expense, are we billing or paying monthly for that or is that an annual?
That's an annual.
Okay, so that, that whole cost would have been up from that 40%?
That whole cost, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think we had budgeted in the 20, 20,000 and then it comes in at about 86 or 85. So, so that was another unbudgeted expense for this year. So, okay?
Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you.
Next, we have Attorney La Chance with a request to establish a capital reserve fund.
Yes, as you probably recall, back in March, the voters had voted to establish a capital reserve fund for improvements and that was sort of designated in line so we could put some of the money from the 1% option tax into that fund. But before we can put that money into a fund, we kind of have to create it and set parameters around it. So I would like to make a motion to establish the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2804A for the purposes of financing furnishings, vehicles, machinery, equipment, apparatus, other physical assets, preliminary studies, surveys, land and rights to land that directly contribute to a betterment or an improvement project, which I know a lot of words and I promise it was indicated on the ballot.
Second for debate.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll move the motion.
Good. Can we get a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion.
So we have a copy of the language that came from the legislature. Do we not have to be concise with that language? Because the language does not, is not that broad. It talks about infrastructure, buildings, sidewalks. I don't know, a couple of other things.
Roads.
Roads. It doesn't talk vehicles or land acquisition or any of those types of things. And I think that's how it was sold to the voters on the ballot. There was specific language pension was another one. So I just, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable making it so broad when that's not what we, that was not our intent.
So yeah, so if I could clarify that quickly, you are right. There was a section under the 1% that was designated for roads and sidewalks and that was separate from a designating a capital improvement fund, which was designed for capital improvements. And the way, this particular one, which I believe was Article 2 on the ballot, Tracy, do you remember?
I don't recall.
Sorry. It was a separate one. There was the 1% that they voted on. And then there was a separate article to designate the capital improvement fund. And under there, it did specifically state furnishings, machinery, equipment, apparatus, the preliminary studies, the surveys, the land and the rights to land. The only reason I included vehicles and other physical assets was because it was slightly vague in there and that was just to give specifics to the specific fund in the language. And the motion for that.
I would prefer to refer this to Finance Committee so we have a discussion because I think we have to re, I think I would like to revisit the language on the ballot, what was there and determine that that's exactly what the voters
Second.
chose when they said yes to these funds.
Second.
So we have a motion to refer to Finance and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
I'll just say, I think that'll help me understand it better before I vote on it.
Yeah.
Very good. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of referring this to the Finance Committee?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We moved the PFAS settlement agreement executive session to the end and we covered Commissioner Protavansky's referral request. So moving on to reports of standing committees, we have Alderwoman Savage with a report from the Charter and Ordnance Committee meeting of November 7th. I believe this was placed on your desk.
So on November 7th, Charter and Ordnance met. The members present were myself, Alderman Kupaly, Alderwoman Hooker. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Davis, Alderman Adams, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Attorney La Chance, Chief Kukuln, Chief Lovett, Planning and Zoning Administrator Strinski, City Engineer Ted Gillian, Commissioner Protavansky, the RRA Executive Director Bove, Jacob Pluta, and Heather Hawk. The meeting was called to order at 5:31. Chair Savage asked the Planning and Zoning Administrator Strinski to lead the discussion on areas that needed improvement such as parking in the green belt, parking on sidewalks, and bringing consistency to the driveway ordinances. Alderman Strinski said that transferring some of the standards that we have for the roads and driveways out of the zoning regulations and into their own standalone roads and driveway ordinance and strategizing how this might be done would help to address these issues. The discussion started around the problems of the parking in the green belt and on the city sidewalks. Administrator Strinski's and the city engineer Gillian, with the use of Google Street View, identified many of the areas in the city where these parking issues are occurring. Commissioner Protavansky said that even the new areas of the green belt are having wear and tear issues because of people parking there. Chief Kukuln explained that when a street is marked, no parking on this side, then everything on that side up to the boundary lines is considered the green belt and they've been able to issue tickets in those cases. Administrator Strinski stated that the property owners, as, as the property owners look to make their rentals more profitable and increase their unit size per building, the planning commission has been looking at strategies through the zoning regulations to help with parking, like making public and private lots permanent uses in the denser areas. Other solutions, like the prohibition of parking in the green belt areas in all cases, no winter parking ban and parking on alternative sides of the streets. no winter parking ban, and parking on alternative sides of the streets, the driveway apron and curb cuts were also discussed. Engineer Gillian suggested that many of the police policies covering these issues should be reworked into some, into some construction standards to protect the street edges. It was decided that Administrator Strinsky, Engineer Gillian, Attorney LaChance, and Alderman Savage would draft language for new standardized driveway and parking ordinance that would consolidate the ordinances into one place and bring it back, and bring this back to a future meeting for approval and recommendation to the whole board. This issue remains in committee, and no action is needed, and this report is for informational purposes only, and the meeting adjourned at 6:29 PM.
Thank you, Alderwoman Savage. Reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have Alderman Barbara Gallo with a report from the Parking Committee meeting of November 15th. A copy can be found on pages four to five of your packet.
Okay, the Parking Committee met on November 15th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. In attendance were committee members Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman McClure. Also in attendance were Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Alderman Davis, Treasurer Markowski, Bob Walker, Ray Lamoria, Tiffany Saltes, Gordon DeShillo, and John Chaffee. Two topics were warned for the discussion, the possibility of free parking downtown for the Christmas season, and an exploratory meeting of the possibility of the city buying the parking deck from the state. A good discussion, excuse me, a good discussion was had about offering free parking during the 2023 season. Suggestions were for free parking from Friday, the Friday after Thanksgiving until Christmas Day, also starting on December 1st, and many other possibilities. A discussion was had with Ray Lamoria, Operating Officer of the Parking Deck, to see if there was any way to offer free parking at this location. Mr. Lamoria said the ticketing system could be set up to allow someone to park in the deck, and when they leave the deck, they would scan their ticket, and no charge would be added to their credit or debit card. After much discussion, it was felt to offer free parking for the entire season could not be done. The Parking Meter Fund is running at a deficit, and it was felt free parking for December would only add to that problem. A motion was made to offer free parking in the parking deck on three Saturdays before Christmas, December 9, 16, and 23, from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM. It was felt this would allow people who have never parked in the deck to use it without charge and see what benefit it may be, and I so move.
All right. So, we have a motion, and it has been seconded, to authorize free parking in the parking deck on the three Saturdays before Christmas from 9 to 6. Any discussion? Alderman McCann.
I wasn't there, but I just want to make sure so the minutes here don't say that the motion was voted on at the meeting, but I assume it was.
Yes, it was. I'm sorry.
Yes, it was.
I neglected to put that in the.
Okay, great. Just making sure.
But I assure you, it was.
Any additional discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Discussion then switched to the possibility of the city taking ownership of the parking deck from the state. This meeting was an exploratory meeting only to see what information would be needed to study if this was a good idea. It was brought up that we would need to see the yearly operating budget, average inventory of cars parking on a daily basis, hours of operation, expenses, yearly income, number of cars the deck will hold, and rents paid by both the bus and Vermont Transit. Also sought was information on repairs that would be needed before the city would even consider taking over the ownership of the deck. It was stated that the deck is five stories tall. The top deck is presently closed off to parking as it is not needed. The deck, including handicap spaces, I should, let me correct that, the parking deck, including handicap spaces, will hold about 600 cars, and clearance is 7 feet 6 inches. Other possible uses of the deck were brought up. Some of those were to place solar panels on the top level to reduce expenses and possible coverage storage on the fourth level for city equipment. It was also stated that a solar study may have been completed by Green Mountain Power. The committee will check on this item. As this was an informational meeting only, no motions were made, and the continued discussion of this will be considered at a later date as the data becomes available. As one follow-up that isn't in the notes here, I contacted Green Mountain Power this week and asked about a study. They have not conducted a study of solar panels on the roof of the deck, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:23.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Gillum?
In your discussion of finding out the facts, just be sure that you put into your plans that that parking deck is going to be needed for two developments that are coming into that area, the Paramount and possible the hotel, which would be used in those for overnight parking or major events that are going to be coming in the downtown area that we don't have now.
Yes.
So, we better keep that.
Mr. Lamoria did state that the parking deck is open 24/7. There's not always attendance there, but it is, and they don't accept cash, but you can park in the deck and get in and get out by using your credit or debit card.
Okay. Very good. Alderwoman Davis?
So, I was at the committee, and I did not stay for all of this discussion, but voiced my concerns. The state will give you a dollar, will pay, you can pay a dollar for this garage, and they'll give it to you. You need to ask yourself why. There's millions of dollars of deferred maintenance in there. It's, you look at the electricity, the heating costs, the plowing, the management. That is not a cost you will ever, should ever, put onto the taxpayers. I'm a no. I don't want you to look at it. I don't want you to consider it. I'm just a no.
Noted.
Well, I understand your concern, but I feel it's something out there.
I'm just going to interject, Alderman Barbara Gallo, we don't have a motion on the floor, so we shouldn't debate this.
I'm sorry.
But, very good. We'll move on from this, but thank you for your report. Next, petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business? Alderman Gillum?
Not really new business, but we have somebody in the room whose birthday is today.
Oh, God.
Alderman Davis's birthday today, but I ain't going to tell you what year, but it is her birthday today.
It's hell to be 50, that's why.
Alderman McCann?
So, I'm not sure if this is something that would go anywhere, but to the comment that was made by a member of the public earlier, that it seems sometimes we're not telling our story very well. I know our meetings are open, our minutes get published, but those may not be all that consumable by the average person in the city, because it's, it's not in front of them, and it's hard to go digging for some of this stuff. I don't know that there would be any need to sort of compel the board or the city to do more social media posting, but if there was a way for all of us to kind of contribute to that story, you know, share the positive things that we are doing after these meetings, you know, stuff that's in executive session, we can't share, but I presume that anything else that comes up that we discuss and vote on in the public portion, we probably ought to be doing a better job, those of us who use social media, sharing that we are doing things. I know, you know, I have an account on Facebook for my position, and I don't have a ton of followers, but I know I don't do the best job sharing some of the things that we do, because by the time we get out of this meeting, you're just kind of like, you need to decompress, and then you're on to real life the next day, and you forget. But, something for all of us to consider, and then with that, I don't know if there's any benefit to kind of create a social media policy either for members of the board or members of the city. So, if we do get more into that, trying to share more of our story, we just have some sideboards on there to make sure we're not kind of stepping into things we don't want to step into legally, socially, whatever it might be. So, I might make a motion to send maybe to General Committee a discussion on a social media policy for members of the board and potentially staff of the city as well.
Alderwoman Tadio, and then Alderwoman McClure.
I would like to, I'll second that, but for debate, and the debate would be to send it to Human Resources, because in Human Resources right now, I have written a code of conduct for us, and we're currently working, Attorney LaChance and I are working on a code of ethics, which the city does have, but needs to be brought into like 2023 version. It's, it's a little old. It's not even digitized, I don't think, so.
No.
Yeah, so I just would say, yes, that's a good idea, but could we send it to HR so that it stays with the other topics that are of that nature?
Makes sense to me, meant that to be the committee goes.
And I will take it.
Okay. Alderwoman McClure?
As a member of the HR committee, I was just going to speak to what Alderwoman Tadio had to say, so I'm on board with that.
Any additional discussion on the referral? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? If not, I can read the language to take us into the first executive session. A motion to, I'd entertain a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a memorandum of understanding in regards to a labor relations agreement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so the motion's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, chief of police, executive board of the police union, Vermont State Rep of the NEBPA, treasurer, clerk, and city attorney to discuss the memorandum of understanding to the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1B.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay.